This is my first cue up cue is block of music.
This time we'll call the order the August five, 2025 special work session of Clearwater City Council. This time we'll move to item two on the agenda, City Manager verbal reports and review of the proposed budget.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Another exciting opportunity to talk about this budget, and I know exciting and budget don't typically go together, but this is an exciting budget for many reasons. One, this is the first budget that we have done from start to finish as a group. And what an incredible collaboration that this has been. Not easy, some of it painful. We had multiple strategic planning meetings to tie it into our budget, had a lot of exercises with our team to make sure that we were focused on the right things and accomplishing the mission that the council had set forth. And I'm confident that in this document, you're going to find that council's priorities have been identified, and that's what we are working towards. We took it seriously to be innovative and really go through our operations to see where there was opportunities to create efficiencies. Some of that we're going to speak to today. But a lot of it is reflected in the budget. And I do recognize, and I think we all need to recognize, that there are positions that were cut as a result of this. And we are working tirelessly to make sure those employees find a place either with our city or assist them in finding employment elsewhere. But the efficiencies that we've created as a result of those reductions are important, and we want to see that through. So thank you so much for all of council, your advice and the time spent doing this. We spent a lot of time in our one-on-ones talking about this. Look forward to any questions that you have. We have multiple presentations today, and look forward to answering your questions. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Kalyne Castle, Budget Director. We presented the proposed budget to you at the council meeting in July. Now that you've had time to review, the purpose of this meeting is really just like the city manager said, to give you time to ask questions with everyone here and just have an open discussion. We have a few topics that were requested, will be presenting to you today, but most of this time is open for your discussion. If you have any questions from the presentation in July, I have that slide deck here, so if there's anything that you wanted to go over, we can pull that up. But I just have a few other, a few key slides very similar to that to go over with you today. This slide shows the total fiscal year 25, 26 proposed budget by fund type. In the last few weeks, we've discovered a few updates and corrections that are presented in these totals which differ from the July presentation, and I'll go through those in detail with you on the next slide. These updated figures represent the expenditure budget for all city operating funds, special revenue funds, and the capital improvement funds, which total 710,298,440. In total, this reflects a 10% decrease from the 24, 25 amended total city budget. And again, to highlight the changes that were are presented in those figures, and all of these changes will be included in the final hearings and in the ordinances that we present to you in September. Again, while preparing some of the documentation for September for the final hearings, we found a few errors that need correcting. First, in the general fund, we found a calculation error in the police department payroll budget, which understated personnel costs. This resulted in an increase of $958,200 to the police department. To offset that increase, we have an expenditure reduction of $41,580 in non-departmental, and this is to true up the transfers of TIF to the CRA in line with the final values that we received in July. And the remaining offset is going to come from increased revenues in the general fund. This includes an increase of 28,000 to adblockerum revenues, also to true up based on the final valuations, an increase of $428,620 to state revenue sharing. Last week, we received an email from the state with their final numbers of that shared revenue source, and it was a good amount higher than what we projected. So that was a good savings to help us with this expenditure increase. And then finally, we're increasing the estimate of red light camera fine revenue by 460,000, and this is based on current trends in that revenue. We're realizing these since the contract was renewed earlier this year, and there was updates to the equipment that has helped that revenue come in a little higher. In the parking fund and the special development fund, I've made corrections to transfers between our funds, all the transfers in and the transfers out have to balance, and for these, we just missed one side, and it was the transfer outside. So in the parking fund, at year end, every year, we make an adjustment to transfer all excess fine revenues for parking enforcement to the general fund, and that has increased over the last few years. On the general fund side, I increased that revenue. I missed increasing the transfer out on the parking, so that was a $300,000 increase to the parking fund. And in the special development fund, transfers of park impact fees were missed. These transfers, which total 419,250, are needed to balance the project funding budgeted in the Countryside Pickleball Project. In the capital improvement fund, there are a few updates actually to the capital funds. We estimated $2.7 million budget for the Clearwater Country Club Bridge Project, and in the last few months, we found that the golf course operator is going to fully manage and fund that construction, so that came out of the capital budget. And we've also been notified of two state grants that were awarded from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, DEP. This is $3 million for the North Beach Stormwater Project and $3 million for a Living Sea Wall Project. These are reimbursement grants, so we've split that budget in half for both of the projects over fiscal year '26 and '27. So the net increase to the capital fund is 300,000. The proposed budget includes a total of 1,891.6 full-time equivalent positions across all funds for fiscal year '26. This is a net decrease of 12.3 FTEs from fiscal year '25. In this graph, the sand-colored portion represents general fund FTEs, which are budgeted at 1,161.4 positions for fiscal year '26. This is a decrease of 12.3 positions from the current year. And the green portion represents all other funds. They are budgeted at 730.2 FTEs, which is the same as the current year. And finally, just as a reminder of all the meetings that are scheduled for the entire budget process. So we posted the preliminary budget online on July 1st, and we went through a full presentation at that July council meeting. This is our special work session today, scheduled for your discussion, and then our two public hearings, which are the final hearings to adopt the budget, will be held in September. These are both going to be special budget meetings. The first hearing is at 6:00 PM on September 3rd, and the second and final, which will fully adopt the budget, will be at 6:00 PM on September 17th. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about these slides. And if you have no questions about these slides, I'll turn it over to our HR Director Tiffany Macris to go over a staffing update.
Council, have any questions about these slides? Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I just want to, again, I like to champion our accomplishments on this, and so what is being presented is a balanced budget, maintaining our current mileage rate with a reduction, an overall reduction in operating, as well as no use of general fund to on capital projects. So this is a really incredible budget that would not have been possible with the team. I wish I could run up and down and just like give everybody a high five because that's what they deserve more than that. So a truly incredible budget. So again, thank you for the direction and the opportunity to provide this budget to you, and thank you to the team for really creating an incredible budget.
I think we echo that, and I guess this is a good time to point out to the public, you know, we were, we were about efficiency before efficiency wasn't cool, or efficiency wasn't being mandated by the state of Florida. But we were way ahead of this. And when I say we, the council and staff, we got on this in October, November, where we are proactive, and we were looking to try to save our taxpayers money, and then also we had weather events which caused us to take a serious look at our budget. So just for anyone out there interested, City of Clearwater is not starting to look at efficiency now. We've been looking at efficiency, and I applaud our team, all of us, city council and staff for, you know, some of these decisions were very uncomfortable, and we get that. For you and for all of us, and we hear from community members who have concerns over changes we're making, and but, you know, what worked 20 years ago may not work today. It may not be in the best interest of the citizens. So to accompany what you've already said, I want the public to know, we are all about this, and we have, congratulate the team. You've done a fantastic job. And, you know, in some cases, probably having challenging conversations with your own departments about programs and activities and staffing, and that wasn't easy, and we appreciate that as a council, what you've done to get us to this point. But this is something I think we will also tell the state of Florida, we want to continue to do. We're always looking for better ways to do things and more efficient ways. And so although this is, I think, my opinion, great result, you know, we're going to continue to evolve and look at all kinds of different ways we can do things more efficiently for taxpayers. Thank you for that. Council, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I would like to echo everything that's been said and thank the staff. I'm very sensitive to the fact that this was a big challenge, and it was difficult, and I want to personally thank you for that. I do, however, want to circle back. I just have a quick little question regarding the staffing. I couldn't help but notice the sharp increase in the promotions. And I was wondering if you can speak to that. Would that, in your mind, be due to our new commitment to leadership training or any training program? Or is that due to a new culture? Why the sharp, sharp increase in promotions, which I think that's great?
Tell me what number you're looking at.
Sorry, present page number 12. Are we not there yet?
That's what our HR director's getting ready to present on.
Well, good.
I just felt like this was like wrapping up, you know what I mean?
Good morning. I'm happy to skip ahead to that.
No, that's fine. I'll wait.
Good morning, Tiffany Macris, Human Resources Director, here to go over the staffing discussion. Jumping into this first slide is our vacancy rate. And so this is, I should start off by saying, all the metrics throughout this presentation is pertaining to permanent employees. So with this, our vacancy rate shown in this graph has the average number of vacancies for each year. And as you can see, we're on a great downward trend. I did want to note that last year, what we presented, we were a little excited about our numbers, but we pointed, presented a point in time metric, but the average was actually 8.7. We presented 7.7. So although it was still an improvement, fair is fair, and I feel like we should go back and true up the number to show the accuracy. However, the positive takeaway on this is that we are still trending down and have an average of 137 vacancies so far for 2025. Our turnover rate is also showing really great trends. So this graph is the turnover rate, which represents the voluntary separations relative to the number of employees. And what we're looking at is a continued single-digit rate for the second year, which is just phenomenal. This graph shows all separations of service, and over the last three years, we have a consistent trend of the lower number of terminations. Drawing attention to your section of the blue bars on the graph, the projections for, we have this consistent trend of lower terminations in the blue is the voluntary, so the folks who want to separate service. So the good news here is that we are showing trends that are moving in a positive direction. So for 2025, we're projecting about a 19% decrease in those voluntary separations from last year, which is about a 50% decrease from two years ago in 2023. So of those blue bar graphs, this is the vacancy reasons that are listed for those, the resignations being the highest percentage. We've got a slight downward tick in the retirement and health, but we're holding steady at resignations being the top reason. And this graph represents a deeper dive into that 57%. So these are the reasons that are provided for the folks who are separating voluntarily. So what we saw over last year is there's slight uptick in new job and relocations, which is kind of understandable and compare, you know, understanding where we were last year with the storms. But dissatisfaction was also a very slight uptick, so that's something that we're paying attention to and really focusing on, making sure that we're doing thorough exit interviews and trying to dive in and understand those reasons why, and see if we can diagnose those metrics and get ahead of it. The good news is that the reductions in the trend for pay consistently moved down another year. So what we're looking at is, over the past three years, we had 10 resignations who cited higher wages, who resigned in 2023. That dropped to four who cited higher wages in 2024, and we're down to two this year so far who cited higher wages as a reason to leave. So I'll take the win with that. And to your graph. So this does show the number of hires and promotions. Obviously, we're on the lower trend for the number of new hires because we have fewer vacancies. And yes, the number of promotions, we're pretty excited about that. So what we've done this year that's a little bit different is we had a refresh of our job proficiency guide program, and what this did is this provides some internal promotional opportunities to folks who are willing to go in and demonstrate that they've done all of these competencies to go through trainings and do these things to move up to the next level, and we've had 40 so far this year. So we're trending to show right about 200 internal promotions for this year. So what are we doing to attack, attract, and retain employees? Oh, I'm going to hear about that one later. So of course, there is a continued focus on us being a premier employer, and what we're doing is we're monitoring our pay plan to make sure that we're staying at the 75th percentile. We're doing regular check-ins on that, and I'm very happy to report that we're absolutely maintaining and still feeling the benefit of that really great comp and class study. So in addition to that, we are very much active in the community HR with our partners departments. We've been to 15 different job fairs this year. We recently had an excellent story out on Bay News Nine, helping us trying to find some really tough spots to fill in our solid waste department. The remote work and increased use of alternative schedules are still showing some success. We've got a lot of continued interest from staff. This is something that they truly cling to as a great benefit and appreciate it. We had our, as you know, great success in our first cohort in the Executive Leadership Academy, so the graduates have gone through. We've started the second cohort and have a lot of great feedback on that program. We receive, HR received a lot of feedback about our lead supervisory trainings and needing to offer more. So I'm happy to announce that we've got almost weekly offerings of these trainings for our supervisors throughout the rest of this year. We have this very successful launch of our learning management system, which ties into LinkedIn Learning and the access that our folks have to really high-quality online trainings. It's just thousands of different topics, so we're really proud of that. And as I mentioned, our refreshed job proficiency guide program, as well as our really robust wellness initiatives, having the employee health center. So I really feel like that is an overall compensation package and benefits that we have to offer to our staff and to new hires. We've got a lot to brag about. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Vice Mayor, you're first. Okay, Councilmember.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment to people that are just finding out the situation with our employees, that we've had a real difficult time retaining employees over the past, as long as I've been here. And, you know, to maintain a high-performance government and services, it's been tough. So we've done a couple of studies to try to make sure we're, our pay schedule is up to, you know, what everybody else is paying their employees, because we seem to have a lot of employees being stolen for higher pay from surrounding municipalities. I think one of the big things that we did was raise it to the 75 percentile, which really helped, and then, you know, giving people promotions when needed. And then the alternate scheduling, I think, really helped, because since COVID, a lot of people, you know, really preferred to work at home, and we had to deal with that after COVID. Is that something we really want people hear? Can, or can we, can we put it out there that people can work, some at home that have kids or something, and we, and work with them to be able to retain them? And I think you've done a great job. Thank you.
That's Mr. Menino.
Well said, Councilman. I would kind of echo a little bit of the same sentiment. We've talked for years about the challenges with attracting and retaining. Is that better? We've talked for years about the challenges of attracting and retaining employees, and this, I know this, this team and staff is very data-driven. We like, we like our data and the information, and that's only part of it, and it's what you do with it once you have access to it. So I say kudos to the whole team and to staff on, on taking the data, on challenges that we're seeing, and putting it to good use in the measures that we've thrown a lot of things at it. And the metrics and the data don't lie. It shows the improvement, and what we're doing is working, and just look forward to seeing a stronger, more efficient government, and we're trending in that right direction. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
If I may, on that note, do a shameless plug for our dashboards. So our dashboards have really made a difference in terms of having valuable metrics and also being used as a tool internally and externally to be a little competitive. I've heard from our departments, when they are seeing these numbers being presented on a dashboard, that they're like, well, I don't want my number to be like that. You know what I mean? And it's uncovered opportunities to create efficiencies and best practices as a result of having those numbers. And we're going to do, as soon as we get to a more completed portion, we're very close to that, of having all of our dashboards done. We're going to do a presentation to council so that the public can see like all of them, and how they work together, and how we're using them internally. So it's something new. It's catching on. I talk about the dashboards everywhere I go, when especially we're meeting with the neighborhoods and stuff like that, but, you know, please look at these. We are using them to hold ourselves accountable and also to brag and show where we're doing really well. So thank you for noting the metrics. It's something that, you know, we've taken on as a project, and it's really important to us so that the, you know, to build public trust and to also show kind of like our report card in terms of how we're doing.
I just want, you mentioned the Bay News Nine story, which was awesome. It showed our solid waste folks. I forget the name of the gentleman who was the, you know, did most of the talking on the segment, but it, I mean, it showed that those folks in those positions are real people, and he was excited about his job, and he kind of, he communicated a joy for his work and a joy for working with the city in a way that I couldn't do it, none of the council members could do it, nobody could do it the way he did it. And we have, you know, I really have loved how we've grown our relationship with the county school system, the private school system, the technical schools here in Pinellas County, because that's our workforce for the next five to 10 years. We've got to find ways to engage these young people who already live here, who have, maybe they don't want to live with their parents, but at least they have a place to live, affordable place to live for the time being. But we've got to get them interested. And that segment, I thought, was a perfect way of him telling the story in a way that could connect with younger people to make them interested in working for the city and that department. But so applaud that, and anything we can do as a council to assist you and continue to communicate that to our young workforce, potential workforce here in the city, please let us know, because it's, it's the path forward to success, I think, for us.
Appreciate it. And to give credit where credit's due, that story was presented by our Public Communications Department to their colleagues and the media, and we're lucky that Bay News Nine wanted to run it, and Cameron Simpson, Simpkins was the gentleman out there. And what I really thought was great about his story is he's second generation. So his dad, through working here, said this is a great place to be, and what a great testament as a parent to say, this is such a great place. I want you to be here too.
Well, he was awesome, and we've got many other awesome employees like him, and the more we can work to tell their story, I think that helps us a great deal. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, next. Do you know who's next?
It is you.
My bad.
So while Nicole is preparing
Thank you.
for her presentation, excuse me one second. So the board consolidation is what we're going to talk about next, and this came as a result, again, as the challenge that was posed by our council to our team in terms of looking at our operations and seeing where we could create some efficiencies. And we've done a lot of that throughout. We thought this one was something that deserved a little bit more attention and publicly being discussed versus some of the AI things that we're doing internally, and we will do a presentation on all of our AI accomplishments as well at another time. But this is, this is a study in efficiencies, and that's what it's, it's being promoted as. It is not being, we are not bringing this forward as a cost reduction. Similar to a lot of our AI opportunities right now, it's not so much in terms of creating cost savings as it is creating efficiencies that hopefully in the future could then turn into cost savings. But I know I've seen, I've gotten a lot of feedback so far from the public, of which, you know, I want to acknowledge that we receive those emails, we read them and report back, and that is not what this is. This is not about a cost savings. We were asked a question to try and quantify some costs, and so we've responded to that question, but I just want to make it clear for the record that that's not why we were bringing this forward. It's more as a result of some efficiency opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Hi, all. My name's Nicole. It's the City Clerk's Office, and we are going to talk about all the boards that we support and that the city provides the opportunity for the public to engage. There's a lot of them, and we're going to talk to you about how we can make some of this more efficient and progressive and more inclusive. So let's start. So we currently have 15 advisory boards that are supported by city staff, the department director, or the designee, whoever their liaison is for the board. Public communications does stream these, most of them, not all. And then for boards outside library operating hours, we have to have sentry security here to allow the public in and out. There are five boards that operate outside. They either start before the library opens, or they end after it closes. So we always have security. There. So here's our advisory boards. They're, they range from, there's a board for everyone, lots of topics. And here, the brown field, civil service, marine advisory, neighborhood, and affordable housing, and public art and design are not, will remain. The sister cities, building a Board of Adjustment and Appeals, the Community Development Board, code board, and the Pension Advisory Committee will also stay. And this is how they meet, how often they meet. So we're here today to talk about a few changes. We are looking at a couple of boards that we'll talk about, and then there are some boards that we can combine to create a more efficient process. So let's start with the airpark advisory board. It was established a long time ago. The purpose is to initiate studies and make recommendations on airport matters to the city council, and their activity over the past couple of years has been to receive staff updates, approve minutes. They elect a chair and vice chair, and they provide feedback regarding, or they did provide feedback when the lease was being negotiated, as well as the name change for the airpark. So because this, the airpark is run by a vendor, we have a flight-based operator, the FBO runs it, and they have staff support, but we all know how they perform their business. The board in our code says that they have the ability to initiate studies or have the authority to direct staff to implement a study. When this was created, again, this was before an FBO ran the airport, or maybe it was in conjunction way back when. This is going on 30 years ago, probably. But we've had an FBO for so long, then the vendor's been running it and just providing feedback and updates to staff and the public. There's still opportunity for the public to raise concerns or questions by coming to you directly or reaching out to the marina staff. There are other facilities, just like the airpark, that are run by a vendor that don't have advisory boards. have advisory boards, like the New Sailing Center and Country Club, Claret and Country Club. So, there's, we have already established processes for those types of activities. The, so, and we can come back and ask questions, and we'll, we'll talk about it. The Nuisance Abatement Board. This is a board that was created more recently, and it was to assist our law enforcement with prosecuting or processing cases for prostitution, drug-related activities on certain property, problem properties in the city. So, this process worked to the point that the board's no longer needed, because however it's being worked on behind the scenes, it's been so helpful that the boards only met a couple times, and that really it was, hey, you're still aboard, we're still here, this, should we have an issue, this is what we'll do. And there's been a couple cases, but in the last 10 years, we've got other avenues to pursue should we, should the city wanna keep that kind of process. We've got the Municipal Code Enforcement Board, and we have a magistrate process in, in place as well. So, those are the only two boards that we're looking at. You can say it. But, well, you'll see where we're going with it. Thank you. So, the Library Board. This is one of the boards we're looking to consolidate. It's, uh, it makes recommendations pertaining to the management and use of the library system, including the establishment of rules and regulations governing the use of the library by the public. So, same, so, couple, last couple of years, they have meant to receive staff updates, they elected a chair and a vice chair, and they talk, talk about library activities with, with Ms. Overmeyer. The, oh, I'm sorry. Yep, that was Library Board. So, Parks and Rec Board, here's another one that we're looking to combine. The purpose is to advise the City Manager and other municipal officers regarding the physical addition of improvements on and beautification of the public parks and playgrounds, and shall make recommendations regarding the development of city property as public parks and playgrounds. Again, the last two years, they've received staff updates, they've received public comments, they were involved in the renaming of a ball field as a public hearing function, they also provided the feedback for the sound and coachmen during the development. So, that is, like I said, one of them that we're looking to combine. The Enviro, Environmental, so the EAB
EAB.
Was created when the organization lacked professional expertise on staff. So, this is, again, this is established a long time ago, and their purpose is to identify and assess significant environmental objectives and review and provide recommendations to city council on selected environmental projects. And now, the city, the city now has a sustainability division that we didn't have a while ago. So, that's rather new to our staff, so we have some expertise on staff, and are more able to take the information and provide it back to the public, but they're doing it not just at the EA, the Environmental Advisory Board. They're, they're out there doing it, and you see them all the time, that all the projects come back to environmental, and so they're out there, they're touching everything. So, that board meeting as well has a lot of staff input and presentations. So, having said all of that, we are looking, I think that's the next line, yes, we are looking to combine the Enviro, the EAB, Parks and Rec, and Library Board, to combine them into what is, we're calling the Community Engagement and Leisure Board Services Board. So, this would be a bi-monthly board, and it would be staffed by the City Clerk's Office. This would be to provide feedback and guidance to city council on endeavors that enhance sustainable recreation, Parks and Cultural Programs at city facilities, and foster community interest in events and initiatives that promote community well-being. Our, our goal, what our vision is, the staff vision, is to create an outreach, just a broader outreach for citizens to have a layer to come back to council should they not want to come to you directly, but then they will take, they will take the core areas of each board, outlined it in code as I read, and gear it towards citizen insight and environmental activities. They can review changes to rules and regulations that affect the library system, like the code says that they have the ability to do, and, yeah, provide the citizen insight, I'm This will be an opportunity also to provide feedback to council, and will allow for an actively engaged board. So, the boards that we have now are, they're like, maybe five on average members each. There's, some have more, some have less. So, this will give, we believe, an opportunity for the public to have a broader discussion, and Parks and Rec touches on environmental, and Parks and Rec can touch on library, and there's just so many moving parts that we really see this being a collaborative and efficient way to get all the information that was previously done quarterly with three different boards. So, this is what our vision is. This board could be up to nine members. We've got nine seats up here, so each board right now, like I said, has, I think, one of them has four, one of them has five, one of them has seven. So, it's across the board, we can combine them all. Excuse me. And our initial thought is, those currently serving on boards would have the first dips to, to submit their application, and then we would open it up to the public to, to receive applications, should we need that, at, at the beginning. And we would be the board liaison, I think. What I also wanted to say, because I know the consolidation of the boards is, is touchy, because we've had these boards forever, this is part of the city history, all these boards. We have a lot more than I'm sure some surrounding jurisdictions do, so, there's, so, I just wanted to say and make it clear that staff is recommending consolidating, not eliminating. Core functions of each board will still be maintained, and in response to council direction, these recommendations are to streamline current processes while taking the opportunity to find efficiencies and reduce redundancies. And I also want to point out that we also have the Neighborhoods Team through our Public Communications Department, who are out in the community all the time. And if they're, like, just for example, like our Environmental Advisory Board receives presentations, if groups would like those types of presentations at their HOA meetings, we can have that arranged. There's so much more options for the community to be involved and for us to engage with the community now than there was back when all these boards were created. They were created before the internet was born. So, we're working with a lot of old stuff, and we're trying to streamline and make efficient. So, with that, I don't want.
Questions? Ms. Marv Menino.
Well, I have mostly a comment, and I do have a question. I think this is a good thing, because I can remember back when we had some complaints from some of the boards that they didn't feel like they did anything, and, you know, and we're always appointing people for these boards. I think it's good to consolidate and have a board that really works better with the public, so I'm kinda glad we're doing this. My question is, how long is this gonna take to initiate? I mean, when do you think this will roll out? I imagine we're gonna have to, are we gonna have to vote on this as a, so it'll have to go through a meeting?
Yes. Code changes will, will be required, because all of these boards are written in code. So, to remove or to alter any of them will require a code amendment, so there will be a couple of public hearings, first and second read of the ordinance. So, there's gonna be a lot of opportunity for public input and discussion.
Good.
I just don't know the exact timeline.
Sometime, maybe next year.
Yes.
That's good to have the public input on it, because I'm sure we will have some, so.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Marv Cotten?
I don't have any questions, more so comments, and I think that you hit the nail on the head with that last comment, right? We have the internet, and some of these things were made before the internet. So, when everybody has a small supercomputer in the palm of their hands, access to information and getting ahold of people in a timely manner is
Yes.
Instantaneously, or instantaneous almost. So, I think that these changes align with technological advances and community needs, and as you noted through your presentation, it also reduces the redundancy. It'll foster, in my opinion, greater collaboration between things that you see in, like, the environmental boards, public programming, and community development going forward. So, I think having that and a unified board is going to be better serving the community, and will be more efficient and effective for what we're trying to do as a government. So, thank you
Yes.
To Roebuck, and to you and your office for going through this and
Yeah.
Presenting this. I appreciate it.
We're looking at a kind of, like, job cross-training, so everyone's gonna be involved, and everyone's gonna know what's going on.
Perfect. Ms. Marv Menino?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all the work you put into it. Obviously, change is scary for some people, and I know there's probably people in the community that right away, fear factor jumps in in this worst-case scenario, but I think it's important to point out that our strategic priorities in the city are not shifting, they're not changing, we're not dropping levels of importance because we're shifting the structures of our board. In fact, what we're trying to do is the exact opposite, and we're trying to make these boards more empowered, make them more effective. We're, we're trying to give government opportunity to operate more efficiently and effectively in streamlining services. We, we put a lot of work, and the teams put a lot of work into the budgeting process, and with the budgeting process and, and decreasing our, our spending and the unfortunate losing of real jobs, and 12 people losing their jobs, there's other sides to that, and the other sides are the la, the lack of, of man and women power, right, and the, the lack of employees' time and resources. So, there is two sides of the coin, and we have to, we have to, to juggle that, and I think you're, we're effectively doing it well with that. But if you would have just stopped it, this is a cost-cutting measure, you, you wouldn't have my support on it, so I appreciate you saying that, and this isn't an elimination. It's a consolidation, and I think that's important to say.
Exactly.
But I do think it's important to continue to establish that narrative, that these boards are important, that they're important to us, and they have been important to a lot, for a long time, and they have done a lot of good things in our community. We're not getting away from that. I think we wanna give them that empowered opportunity to, to work at a higher level, and to have a, a bigger impact in pushing initiatives and educational outreach, and just doing it in a different means and a different matter. I do think as we move forward with numbers, I think it's important that when we appoint people to these boards, we dig a little bit deeper on expertise and experience. I think not just appointing somebody because it represents a zip code or come from a different section of the community. I don't know if that's enough anymore if we go in this direction. We truly need to take that list of, of volunteers and that are interested and make sure we're finding, whether it's three environmental, EAB board members, and two library, and two Parks and Rec, but whatever that math comes out. I think it's important that we're truly finding expertise and professionals in those fields that can truly give us the, the most support on those boards. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor?
Well said. Everything that's been said so far, I agree. I, it is very healthy to reevaluate our processes and make changes, especially in the last few years when there have been other changes that actually call this to be reevaluated. For example, we created a whole new department for neighborhoods with new employees, just specifically to that, the Sustainability Department. These are all new departments that have been created in the last few years, and therefore it is healthy to reevaluate our, our processes. So, in a nutshell, I echo what's been said. This, in my mind, is not cost savings, it's not eliminating, it's really trying to empower our citizens and make the process efficient. So, out of 15 boards, we're only eliminating one, we're absorbing another, and as someone who was in one of those, the, what do you call it, the, I was in one of the boards that we actually discussed absorbing the other, because they only met once or twice in a few years, we also are consolidating three to empower them, right? So, we are increasing the frequency of meetings, we are increasing the, the number of members, and empowering them so that they actually engage more with the community. And that's the message I wanna send. It's not we're eliminating or tying anyone's hands, we're making it more efficient and more empowering, so that they can be heard in a more efficient and powerful way. That's how I perceive it. And I thank the staff for constantly looking at how to improve and modify how we do things as time changes how we, how we proceed, right? We have to always adapt to what we're doing. So, thank you for your effort, and the whole team.
Any more? Well, I'll weigh in then. I don't, you know, this wasn't something, you know, my idea, and I, I was at the CNC Monday night, and, and since then, we've gotten a lot of emails from folks really concerned, in particular about the EAB. And so, I've, I've read them all, and understand their concerns. I, I think, going along with what's already been said, you know, you, you always wanna look at, you know, would we start doing it this way if we weren't already doing it? And I think the answer for some of these is no, we would not. And if that answer is no, what resources are you taking away from other opportunities by maintaining something which you're just maintaining for history and not because you would start doing it today? And even, even though we are not yielding direct cost savings, there is, I mean, our staff's time and money i- is money, and it, to the extent we are taking our staff away, you know, take our sustainability coordinator, she could be doing a lot of other things to really provide impact or benefit to the citizens if, if she wasn't repeatedly reporting on the same thing to different groups. So, for me, it's, the consolidation makes a lot of sense, because it does yield some savings to us from a budget statement, not directly, but indirectly. And the other thing I've been thinking about, since, you know, considering the concern that these folks, particularly the EAB, you know, won't have the same input they've had, you know, we've, we've changed the community to where these boards have never been about advocacy, they've always been advisory, and there's definitely advisory and advocacy. We have nonprofit groups throughout our community that advocate on all three of these boards. The Sierra Club has been very active in our community on environmental issues, and, and, I, I think anytime we're invited to come present to CNC, or Sierra Club, or any of those groups, we always send staff to do that.
Absolutely.
So, we're not gonna withhold information, but I think the way our communities have evolved, it's just that kind of thing is a, is a better place for folks who are interested in a particular topic or agenda to kind of organize as a community and, and, and give recommendations from privateers. So, it's not gonna stop that, it's just gonna change the formal process, the minute-taking of the recording and all those things that I, I realize, some of the community don't realize the time our clerk's office spends on all kinds of things. It's not just meetings. We get public records requests like you wouldn't believe, I mean, from all of them, all the time. There's a heavy weight on your department and all of our departments, and, and each department that has to come report to these boards, it's a lot of time. And it's not just the Sierra Club, we have the Friends of the Library, which, which has been very active, and
Yes.
So, there's an opportunity for folks who are really interested to get involved in that organization, make it more robust, and we don't for all of the parks, but the Friends of Mox and the Lake have been very active, I've been out there meeting with them, so we'll still have places for these folks to engage, even if they're not on this consolidated board.
Yes.
So, that's what's going through my mind, is, I don't, hearing what I've heard, I don't see we're, you know, reducing anybody's opportunity to have input and say, and we want that, we want community engagement. Your, your department's just suggesting there's maybe a more efficient way to do that nowadays, and that would allow us to provide better service to our citizens, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you for presenting this idea.
Thank you.
You know, if we don't challenge ourselves to think out of the box, then we won't make progress on anything, and this whole meeting today has been about that. I wanna congratulate all of our staff
Thank you.
For raising some difficult, you know, topics and, and having some challenging discussions, and this is one of them, and thank you And thank you for at least bringing the idea forward.
Absolutely.
Mayor, if I just may, I want to piggyback on a lot of what you said because in terms, you know, we encourage the public to reach out and to send emails and stuff and that we read them, and so just to make sure people do feel heard. And several of the emails that I read, it was an interpretation by some of the public that we're trying to eliminate opportunities for engagement. That is never the direction, I have not interpreted any kind of direction from the council in that way at all. It's actually been the opposite. Just like you said, we're just creating efficiencies, but also creating opportunities. And going back to the Neighborhoods Department and the Sustainability Department, a majority of what they do is engagement with the public. And we've even done a communication campaign in terms of making sure that our public understands how they can engage with us and how to request us to appear at any number of meetings, of which we've done. I'm not aware of any meeting request that has been requested that we have turned down. And we will continue to promote that as our availability. So just to be clear, there's been no direction provided to eliminate engagement. The direction provided by this board, by this council, has actually been the opposite, and we have teams dedicated to doing that. I think also from the City Manager's Office, we reflect the commitment to the community in terms of like we are out there ourselves promoting and engaging with our community, and that's the direction that we've also provided our department has. And I know that that has been acknowledged and received by the public in terms of a change of how much our entire leadership team and staff in general are engaged with the community and out there in the public to make sure they have access to us. So thank you for that direction.
Anybody else?
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And just thank you all for hearing us and talking it out. We do appreciate it, we're always, we're excited about it. And just as an example, I've staffed all of these meetings at some point, and I've heard Matt Anderson talk about pesticides at least three or four different meetings.
Okay.
And he's available. So we appreciate it, and also before I leave, and just because I didn't want to not say this, that this is focusing on two of the city's strategic plan opportunities, community well-being, and environmental stewardship. So I just wanted to make that point. So thank you all.
Thank you. Okay. Next presentation.
All right, so Mayor and Council, now we're going to move into, we're going to have three different presentations as it relates to our fees. And this information was provided a few months ago as a result of our team looking at our operations, looking at other communities that have similar assets that we do, and seeing where we can make some improvements in user fees so that we are not so solely reliant on mileage to balance our budget. And so this is what, this isn't response to that direction that was provided at a strategic plan, and we look forward to some direction. We can handle that any way you deem, sir, if you want to do them individually at the conclusion of the presentation, or if you want to talk about them collectively at the end and make decisions, so however you want to do that. But we do have three separate presentations just to provide a summary of what information has been provided and attached to this agenda.
I think just for time, I'd prefer just collectively discuss them after they've made the three, that's without any objection.
Okay.
That's what we'll do.
Well, good morning, Council Mayor Mike McDonald, Marine and Aviation Director. Following the results of the comprehensive slip rental market rate study conducted in spring of 2025, staff recommends adjusting Marina slip rental rates to align with current market conditions. The study revealed that Clearwater's rates were significantly below market averages across all Marina facilities. To mitigate the impact on tenants and provide a smooth transition, the rate adjustment will be phased in over a six-month period as recommended by the Marine Advisory Board. It says followed, effective October 1st, 2025, rates will increase 50% of the difference between the current rates and the full market rates identified in the study. And then effective April 1st, 2026, rates will be brought to the full market rate, completing the transition. Staff also recommends moving the commercial slip rate from a per-passenger count to a slip-size rate in line with industry standards with a rate recognized by the rate study. This phased approach ensures fairness and transparency while maintaining financial sustainability for Marina operations and aligning with market expectations. The goal is to be net neutral, providing the enterprise fund with the ability to cover all costs for operations, major repairs, and eventual replacement of all Marina facilities. And at the end, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Arcator, Parks and Recreation Director. The majority of Parks and Rec's budget is funded by the General Fund and subsidized by the General Fund. Where possible, the department offsets these costs by charging various user fees. User fees can be divided in various categories such as rentals, admissions, class fees, activity fees, service fees, instructor fees, et cetera. In 1980, the city council adopted Resolution 80-89, authorizing the city manager to establish all fees connected with Parks and Recreation programming and classes which help to free the operating cost. Since then, the Parks and Recreation Department has established or modified our fee structure through approval by the city manager or their designated. There are well over 60 various user fee categories that are currently in use. The only fees that are currently governed by ordinance are the Parks and Recreation Impact Fees, the non-resident fees, and race fees, which are currently 25 cents per runner. Not sure why that one's there, but those are the three that are governed by the ordinance. Earlier in the year, staff gathered benchmarking data from numerous cities to establish up-to-date rate structures that are competitive with other cities. You've been provided with a list of the various user fees we currently have in Parks and Recreation, and our proposed new recommendation fees are to begin October 1, 2025. I will not go over each line item relating to the fee increases, but suffice to say, we adjusted the fees where it was necessary. Now, the groups or the people that will be most impacted by these fees will be an increase, as you went through and probably looked at them, were basically the rental fees for rooms, for ball fields, for swimming pools. Those were well below our competitors. So those were all raised throughout this process. We projected that the implementation of the recommended fee structures, Parks and Recreation Department will realize a net gain in user revenue of $863,000. In other words, what we have given you will result, if we continue at the same rate we are, of about $900,000 additional dollars. I'd also like to point out, in addition to these user fees, the Parks and Recreation Department's responsible for managing various contracts relating to Parks and Recreation Department, which further offsets the cost of the Parks and Recreation budget. The total projected revenue generated by Parks and Recreation for fiscal year 2526 is estimated to be $9,648,000. And with this additional $900,000, that would take it to about $10,511,000. With that, I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
We'll come back to you after the next presentation, yeah.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Jeremy Olshouse, Assistant Director of Public Works. Talked to you a little bit about parking. You should all have the decision brief that we had prepared previously, looking to do a couple of things with parking, including adding special events, parking rates, 50 cent increase in beach parking rates, extending paid parking until 8:00 PM, including weekends in the downtown area, increasing parking fines by $20, basically across the board, increase downtown parking rates by 25 cents per hour, off-street 50 cents per hour, on-street, and increase beach parking permits from the current $35 to $75. All told, that should generate us an additional $3 million plus. And usually, we don't try to emphasize the budget. We try to use industry standards to make a parking system that makes sense, and the parking system as an enterprise fund does a lot of good works between lifeguards, crossing guards, beach cleanup, that type of stuff. But the reality of it, to have the nice things, sometimes we have to pay for it. So we suffered during the hurricanes, we lost some parking lots for a while, took us out of service, had to repair those, have to pay that. We've got a garage that we're excited, there's a lot of good things going on in parking right now, I'll try to stay on topic, the budget. But all that stuff has to be paid for. So the parking garage, with the rates downtown, I think all these rates that we proposed are conservative, justified, but the downtown is still going to be relatively inexpensive to come and park at, even with the changes that we're proposing. But the garage still needs to be paid for, and it's, you know, garages aren't inexpensive. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. So now, we've had, oh, yeah, we got three of them. So now, questions, so.
Do we want to go?
Each other, you want to go first?
One of the presentations at a time versus jumping back and forth?
I think just any questions we have in general, and then they can step up as needed for each question we have, whatever topic, yeah.
Perfect.
So you want to start? Vice Mayor?
So in terms of all the presentations, sorry. When I reviewed all the data, I mean, it was pretty consistent that what the changes are going to bring us up to par with everyone else, and so I don't question any of them. The data supports it, if it's Marina or Parks and Recs. The only one that I have concerns about is the extending downtown paid parking hours to include the weekends and until 8:00. In my opinion, this increased revenue of $269 is not worth the risk of disrupting the slight increase of the momentum that we're experiencing in downtown. I've compared this before. Downtown is like a toddler learning how to walk. We should remove the obstacles, not add them. I would love to say that it is time to do this, but we're not there yet. It is my opinion that it is too early, it is too premature, maybe in three to five years, but right now, the brick and mortar businesses rely on that 6 to 8 and weekends to remain viable. And adding parking rates to those hours, I think would be detrimental to the momentum that this downtown is experiencing, and it is too premature. So all the other data, I support all the increases, even including the fines, as well as the increase of the rate. But the hours at 6 to 8 and the weekends, that is such a, you know, a sweet spot. I cannot support that, that is the only thing that I have concerns about.
I have the same concerns. Downtown is not ready for a parking increase. There's still businesses that are struggling, even though it seems like on event night, you know, they're doing great, but I don't want to see the parking fees go on the weekends, and I don't want to see the rate go up on the downtown right now. And I'm fine with everything else, but I think we need to give it a little more time. Let's wait and see what the development, when that happens on the bluff, if that changes. I'm sure when the county starts to do their move out, maybe that'd be a good time to reevaluate, but right now, I think it's a little too early to do downtown rate hike.
That's Maru Manino.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Marina, 99 pages, that was an extremely in-depth, in-depth report. I mean, SWOT analysis and geography and maps and all the different comparatives, that was a lot of reading. Very informative, allows you to make the right decision at the end of the day. I'm not trying to be the most expensive, we're trying to be competitive.
Okay.
And I think it makes sense.
Okay.
So I'm in support of it. I think it's important that we're doing these exercises across the board. We've said for years, we're pretty reliant on our ad valorem taxes. We've heard a lot of discussion from Tallahassee on what that, their hopeful or plans may be, and we have to find additional ways to run as a city efficiently without beating the citizens up some way to pay for it, and finding ways that, you know, we're not competitive or that we're very far off, and this exercise is very important, so.
Well, with this enterprise fund, you know, that is our goal, is the users pay for it, and they'll pay for all repairs, for their operations, and the eventual replacement of these Marina facilities.
Yeah, I agree, makes sense.
Without using taxpayer dollars.
And thank you for the in-depth report and the reading. I'll move on from that. Parking, I do hear what the other two council members are saying. I do have a question for you, though, when you say that, we're leaving off the special event parking rate, so if we're taking a position of not supporting the increases in the 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, are you saying we're not ready for special event parking rate increases as well? Just so we're all on the same page?
No, I'm in support of that. There are special events, let's standardize the fees, that's fine. I'm talking about extending the fees after 6:00 PM and on the weekend. That's the only one that I have concern with.
You as well.
And I as well, because I think that, you know, the competitive parking out there is already there, and people are filling the lots. And, you know, we've had almost two years of success with the sound, so I'm fine with that.
Thank you, and I agree with that, and I just was looking for clarity. With the special events, how are we going to define high demand, and where do we put that threshold on?
Right, thank you. And with the format here, I do want to address a couple of these things that have been mentioned, just food for thought across the board. But as for your direct question here, we'll work with the Special Events Committee, Parks and Rec, to find out what the projected attendance is. They usually know that in advance, they can give that out. So if it's going to be a very crowded show, like, well, Fourth of July fireworks, typically the rain's coming, that's going to be a very big event, so we should enact special event
So we'll pick some sweet spot, like 3,000 or 4,000, whatever that expected attendance is, and that's when that-
Right, we need to be flexible, I'm sorry, I cut you off, but yeah, we need some flexibility there to kind of dial it in right as we go, because we haven't had it, we haven't done a special event rate. But now, again, there's a science that goes along with the parking as well as the financial piece. We're talking about financial today, so I kind of led with all that. But as far as the reasons behind paid parking, there's data out there that supports, because that's one of the comments that are made here are very, very common, they come from all over the place, is, oh, it's going to hurt, it's going to hurt parking, it's going to hurt the businesses and that kind of stuff. Actually, the data kind of points the other way. If we do it right, and that's what we've proposed here with our rate structure and that kind of stuff, we want the people that are parking for more longer term, they can look to park further away, we still have some free spaces available, we'll have that, I think, for a very, very long time, if not forever, or cheaper spaces if you park in the garage. That leaves the spaces on the street, those ones that if somebody's driving down the street, oh, I might like to stop there, but there's no parking on the street, I'm not going to bother, I'm going to keep on going. It turns around, we've actually had very recently, from the folks up closer to the Knoll and the businesses there, that higher end of Cleveland Street, they've come to us and said, hey, you need to put paid parking on here because the parking's being taken up all day long by folks that just live in the area, or, you know, the parking spaces out front of a restaurant shouldn't be taken up by the chef and the waitress, it should be taken up by customers. The chef and the waitress should find a different, cheaper place to park, and that's why you have a rate for, you could buy a monthly pass to park in the parking garage for a very, very reasonable rate and that kind of stuff. So I know, like, OG paid parking, and the first reaction is, and we do have some very vocal folks, there's some business owners that have complained about, well, parking is killing, you know, parking fees are killing my business, and it's, the data shows it's actually quite the opposite.
Thank you, just a couple more. The beach parking permits, do we have, is there separate categories between service industry and hospitality industry and residence? Or are they all paying the same rate that we're, in essence, doubling in this plan?
So we're not doing it for residents, it's just for the people that work on the beach. And currently, at the $35 a month, given our, you know, we've raised our parking rates, I think back in 2019, they got raised, I don't know what they were now, but now they're $3 an hour, $3.50 an hour off-street, but $35 for, all you need to do is prove that you work on the beach and you qualify to apply for a beach parking permit for the $35. That's just incredibly inexpensive, we feel.
Yeah, but now we're saying 70? Is that, we're increasing it by 35?
I think it was 75, 75 we're saying.
Okay.
So yeah, I know, it seems like, oh geez.
It seems like a challenge to do on a service industry and hospitality that's challenged to attract and retain, and then to double the, but- to attract and retain, and then to double, but just food for thought. My last one with parking was on-street parking on the beach, do we charge, a lot of towns charge much more, a higher premium for those on-street parkings in front of the businesses in hopes to turn those cars over and stuff?
Yes, if you look, we've included that in the decision brief as far as comparisons, cost comparisons to other municipalities, both here in Pinellas County and further. We're not proposing, we don't want to be the highest, we don't want to be the most expensive. We think we're, we have an awesome asset, our beach is incredible, people want to come from all over the place to be here, so we could probably say that it's worthy of being the most expensive. But again, I think we've given you conservative prices across the board on where we should be, doesn't make us the most expensive, and I know that one doubles, but that's because it was just so incredibly low before. If you work it out, somebody working 40 hours a week for, you know, parking all that time, it's still like less than a dollar an hour. It's really still inexpensive.
And just, you know, I'm just thinking, you know, thinking of bartender, somebody that's buses tables, and they only get three shifts a week down there or something when they're not busy, and for them to pay $70 a month on top of that.
And to your point, though, I mean, that's, that's the balance that we're trying to shoot for there is, we know that the private parking lots and private garages that exist on the beach right now, they'll charge you $50 a day, and they don't care.
Yeah, I picked up a to-go hamburger and paid 70 bucks, I get it.
That's, yeah, and that, you know, so we're still giving, you know, a significant discount over what the market rate would be.
Yeah.
But, you know, and then the encouragement there is, hey, carpool, or, you know, take, get a ride in, get dropped off, use public transportation, use some other method, you know, if you want to save some money, it shouldn't be on the city to like supplement you, you know, to an extreme extent. We're giving you something.
Or the business owner can help, yeah. I get it, there's definitely a balance. Thank you for answering those questions. Mr. Kater, thank you so much. This format was so hard to read and stay in doubt. Did anybody else have a challenge with that?
Yeah.
There's so many items, and I was trying to piece it together like a puzzle, like, is this a?
Yeah, side to side, yeah. Let's put it in red writing, yeah.
And I thought it was maybe the format on my printer, my computer, so I'm not, I'm not doing it.
Oh, you just have to print it on big paper.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go.
Exactly right. That's a challenge I was running into.
I do apologize.
No, that's not, that's not your fault, it's my lack of a big printer at the house, apparently.
I had to take.
Just, help me just understand a couple things. When we talk about some of the biggest impacts being the rental fees?
Mm-hmm.
Do, sports tourism, obviously very important to our community and we rely pretty heavily on it. When a user group comes in and rents lacrosse or something, rents fields, are they renting at the same rate as countryside Cougars, Clearwater Tornadoes, and things like that?
Well, the Clearwater Tornadoes and our cosponsor groups have, it's a little different.
Okay, and that's my question.
Those actually have, yes, they're a much lower race, and we take care of them. That's what, you know, they do the programming for us, basically, and we provide the fields. They do, I think they're allowed for two tournaments if they want, for three, basically, that we don't pay them. But yeah, after that, I think that the rates are the same.
Are those community partners' rates drastically increasing, as we kind of said?
Well, for example, let's say a private rental rate is increasing. Let's say you want to rent a ball field. And so for a private group, you go through, basically, you do city programs first, then cosponsor groups have it second, and then basically after that, you know, it would be open for private groups if we have any time available. We don't have a whole lot, we have so few fields, as you know.
We have enough space, right.
That, you know, there are not a lot available after we use that.
Okay, and then just help me understand without being able to read through this, what is an impact to a family of, you know, one child playing football from Safety Harbor, so they need an out-of-city resident card? Is, are they looking at a drastic increase in what they're paying for their card in this plan?
Let's take a different city. Safety Harbor, actually, because they contributed to the countryside complex there, they can actually pay the same rate as a resident.
Gotcha, so maybe Eastlake or?
Yeah, Eastlake or something.
Palm Harbor, yeah.
Basically, their play does, is not affected. We're talking about the rents here.
Okay.
As far as the.
The rec cards aren't?
That's right, the rec cards are not, you know, they're not changed, they're by formula every year. So this does not really increase their rates at all, or affect them at all. It does affect anybody that generally are private groups that are coming in here to rent our facilities, or if you want to have a wedding, you want to rent, you know, the Clearwater Beach rec center. Not a good idea right now, but that fee has increased. Those are the ones we're talking about.
No, I totally understand, I get it, it's supply and demand, we are extremely limited, and you know, on outdoor, long-range, open-field spacing, and those things, they cost money. I appreciate you, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Marina Cotton?
Yes, sir. Let me get this on, so everybody can hear. I appreciate you all, thank you very much for the dedication. As Councilmember Marina, 99-page report, very detailed, lots of reading, you know, and I think it's not going to come to a shock to anybody in this room, kind of where I stand, and, you know, I think the goal of government shouldn't be on the backs of our residents, right? I think it's to build a city that's, has access, that's fair to everybody, the opportunity's open to everybody, and public service is just that, open to the public. And I think that you all, just from the budget, which we'll get back into later, but in these fees have addressed certain things that are great. I just want to make sure that when we're talking about these fees, the certain exemptions that we already have in each unique area are going to stay there. When I talk about exemptions, it's going to be for, you know, military members, seniors, those types of areas. And something that was brought up that I do agree with is the permitting for the beach. I thought about our service workers down there, too, right? When you're a valet for a hotel, when you're a busboy, when you're something like that, doubling a fee might not be the smartest approach, in my opinion. You know, I think that we always, and not saying that anybody here didn't do that, but we need to keep fairness in check with those types of things. And I understand that some people out there will be able to afford those, but there's a lot of people that probably won't, that maybe already are in a tough way financially. So we just need to make sure that we're keeping those people in mind, and I think that that drastic increase might be a little bit too much. Frankly, I think that the fee that's already there is probably fair, especially when taking in a server, or a busboy, or a valet. When fees, you know, get redone, which I think they should always be reevaluated, that's an important, healthy thing to keep doing. A, so we don't become the bottom of the barrel and get taken advantage of, but also so that we're not at the top, and nobody's coming in to fill Marina slips, or come to a downtown, or sign up to hold a pavilion, right, for a birthday party. So it is a healthy balance, and I think as we look through majority of what's been presented, I think that you guys have all done a great job in protecting, you know, our fiscal house and the people that we serve. But we can't forget that we do need to essentially roll with the punches. If something needs to be reviewed, and we're seeing an uptick in complaints in certain areas, that we up here as elected officials are maintaining those cries, those needs, and reevaluating something, and maybe coming back to each of you prospectively in what the area is, and asking you to either justify or relook back at, examine, and see if we need to lower, or again, at certain times, increase certain things. So other than the parking that I noticed, that would be one of my concerns is the beach, as well as increasing on weekends, you know, sometimes the increase on the weekday nights, I can kind of see that, you know, I can understand those changes. We are a struggling downtown in trying to get that revitalization. I agree with the special events and that sliding of whenever you're able to implement those fees, of even staying, as has been noted, up to par with certain parking lots, right? We have the sound, it's generating a great revenue source and bringing a lot of people into downtown Clearwater, and I think that we need to maintain those fees, so I agree with that. But maybe when we're talking about just regular weekends and off-nights, you know, that we do focus on those families and not the burdens that we're trying to just put on people that might want to come down here and grab a meal and visit just the park itself, or the splash pad, or something like that. So overall, again, I think that you guys have done a fantastic job. You and your staff have sat down, reevaluated lots of hours and work into what needs to be done, but maybe just those key intricate areas. And I know they seem to be falling on you with the parking, is what seems to be the big issue. But I appreciate you hearing our concerns and addressing those as they come forward. But I do share a sentiment in what seems to be one of the bigger areas in the overall fee structure that you've presented, so thank you.
Yes, Mayor?
Jeremy, just to circle back.
Yes.
I acknowledge and accept that the data supports, or the research supports, that it is a good decision to increase the rates. I accept that and I acknowledge it. However, I believe our downtown is an outlier, and it may not apply to our downtown. It is just a strange little burden. I don't think, I think it's the exception, and that's, I wanted to clarify that with you, that I do acknowledge and accept the data, that you are basing your decisions on. I just feel that our downtown is an outlier, and it doesn't apply to it, that's all.
Yes, Mayor, and that's extremely fair. I mean, there's some things we can do to do some research on that. Like I said, I know we've gotten some complaints from a business owner up on Cleveland that wants parking, paid parking added, because the street in front of his business is constantly filled with not customers.
Right.
So, I mean, that's the whole purpose of it, is to create that turnover. I think we need that turnover on the weekends, just like we do during the week. But we can get, we can do some research and provide you some counts, and is it filled up during the weekend, or is it not, you know?
And I think I'm willing, like, we should be willing to reevaluate as things progress, right? Now we're going to have a lot of construction going on. We're going to get development happening, and new apartments and all that. This is something I'm willing to reopen, you know, in the near future. I just don't think it's now.
Right. And thanks for bringing that, that was one of our concerns as well, when all these construction projects do start up, what keeps the construction worker from parking and staying in a spot all day long?
Correct.
Yeah.
If it's not paid parking, they're not incentivized to move. And that's, that's.
Right, but this is extending it till eight and on the weekends, where the construction workers are not there.
And to your point, but that's through the dinner rush, so, you know, they still want, you know, you still want customers coming in all the way through dinner, so, but if it's filled up with somebody that's just a resident or parked there because they're down doing something recreationally, that you're not getting your customer base.
So with that, I completely agree with you, and that's why I say it's an intricate thing, and you're going to see the dialogue back and forth here, because on the weekends, I think a parking increase is probably necessary to ensure that these businesses get other traffic, right? When people are trying to move along or get something on, not just somebody parked there all day. And when it comes to businesses reaching out to us, I think that we should look into evaluating those spaces, not to say that you haven't, and make them parking, so that that restaurant, business, whatever it is, if it's a valid reason, and it makes sense that we do maybe make that part, paid parking, to get the fresh traffic moving, right? So especially when dealing with parking, as you can see, it's very unique, right? Each of us have our own specific thoughts, and we're trying to get on the same page. And that's why I agree with the special event increase in parking, I agree with weekend, make sure that traffic's staying fluid and moving, that people aren't just coming at 4:00 p.m. and staying until, you know, at 11:00 p.m., and maybe keeping, if they're not perusing and continuing to have foot traffic and enjoy a restaurant, Nash Keys, or what other businesses start to come in, that they're moving on about their business, not that they're just hanging out in an apartment or somebody's house, right? So it is a very specific, intricate type of thing, where you're trying to balance that. And that's why I say maybe during the weekdays, I'm not quite there yet, weekends, I fully agree with the increase there, and especially with everything else that you've presented in the special event. I think we already know where I'm at with the beach, so I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but thank you.
Yeah, and that is the balance that we all strive for, so thanks for understanding.
Ms. Robert?
All right, so I want to amend what I said before. I am not for free parking, because I know, I've been, we've been talking about parking for, I have at least for probably 15 years, back when, before we even did the streetscape, we were getting people, oh, we got to have free parking. And then what happened? All the people that worked downtown parked in the spaces, and then nobody had any parking spaces. So I'll amend what I said. I think I would like, not like to see the parking rates raised during the week, but I do want to see free parking go away. So weekends, I'm fine with putting a parking fee on that. And, you know, the kind of, a lot of the events we have now will go to paid parking, and it'll take care of some of the Saturday night, Sunday night stuff we're doing.
So, yeah.
One last thing, something we haven't discussed, perception. The perception is, there's nothing going on in downtown. Why would we add any perception or anything negative to that perception by saying, oh, there's the negative perception downtown, and now you have to pay for parking, when you can go to Dunedin or other places and have free parking? Again, it's too early. All this, that, all these things that are brought up make sense, but our downtown is special. It is, it is in a very tricky position of almost succeeding, and it's just too premature. When I hear people say, you know, Lena, why do I have to come to Clearwater? It's only five or six restaurants, and then I hear, well, at least the parking's free. It is. It does go into people's minds when considering. I just don't understand the pressure, or the, I guess, the feeling of doing it so quickly. We're talking about $269,000 in revenue, which I think is not justified to risk what we've accomplished. To, you know, we're talking about downtown like it's normal, it's not normal. We've been trying to revitalize it for decades, we're finally getting traction, so what's the rush to risk it? We can reevaluate this in a year.
Well, the goal this morning is to give staff direction, particularly on these issues. So if I can kind of, and I'm hearing different things, and I really haven't weighed in yet, but I don't really have anything different from what's already been said by the four of you, but can we just identify for staff which ones we're acceptable to and which ones we have a challenge with? So the first one I heard us discuss was special events parking rates, and are we in agreement to give staff direction to begin?
Yeah, absolutely.
Doing that, okay? And then increase the beach parking rate. I want to, I'm sensitive to what colleagues to my left have said, on parking for beach residents and the workforce out there, which is a problem. So, but for the residents, I can tell you that it's really, really hard to get on and off the beach. So if you want to get something to eat, or whatever, you sometimes need to stay on the beach, and sometimes on your part of the beach, either North Beach or South Beach. So if there's anything we can do to, for the tourists and folks driving in from out there, other areas in Tampa Bay to enjoy a day at the beach, fine. But for those folks who really, that beach parking is part of their daily life, I'd like to see us to come up with a plan to not maybe increase on those folks who really depend on it for everyday life. For the folks driving in and off and fighting the causeway, you know, and off, I'm okay with that. But I'd like, just want to make sure we're working with our innkeepers, our barkeepers, and folks that employ folks out there to make sure we're not impacting them too much. As was said, you know, they went through a very tough time in October and lost a lot of wages and couldn't support their families, and they're just now making that back up with heavy tourism we've had since. And then beach residents just, they want to support those local businesses, particularly in the shoulder times, when the tourists aren't out there. To the extent we raise the parking on beach residents to get out there and visit those businesses, I don't know that that's a good idea either. So I don't know if there's additional research we can do, how we can kind of accommodate those two groups, the workforce and beach residents, to maybe lessen the increase on them, but I'd like to see you do that, Barbara.
And to your point, Mr. Mayor, so we already have, and have had for quite some time, a half-price, half-price discount program for any resident. We didn't limit it to just beach residents, because any taxpayer that's paying property taxes to the city, or living in the city, they get half price if they use parking. They have to sign up for it, so that remains the same. So even if we jump the price up to.
I guess my question, though, is, if we're going to increase the rec, should we also increase the discount, so that they're not impacted?
Fifty percent was an easy number to come up with, you know, we could, we could certainly.
I'd like to see you look at that.
Yeah, we could certainly look to do that, but as far as the innkeepers, the folks that are working on the beach, again, if we do the math, if they're working full-time, even at $75, the one, the number we proposed, they're less than 50 cents an hour at that point. I mean, how cheap are we?
Well, I say that because I know, I know, you know, we just had Charmaine's move from Clearwater Beach inland, and her story was, what you hear for a lot of the smaller businesses on the beach. And, uh, and her, her story was, what you hear from a lot of the smaller businesses on the beach is that it was too expensive for her, uh, folks to find parking. She's not a big enough business like the resorts to pay for employee parking. So it, you know, while little it is, puts a real pressure on some of those workers for the small businesses. So just, just, I, I'm not giving you an answer. I'm just asking you if we could look at that. I'm okay with the increase, but I'd like to be sensitive to those two demographics if we could. And then the next one on here was extend downtown paid parking hours to include weekends. So that's where I heard maybe some difference. So what's our consensus on that?
I am good for weekends, um, to go forward with that. To, as noted, you know, make sure that you don't have one car stagnant for ten hours, you know, but to allow our businesses and restaurants to get fresh, um, foot traffic, essentially.
Vice Mayor, no. Uh, Councilman Robert.
Uh, I'm good for the weekend, but I don't, I'm against raising the rate downtown right now. And that includes the weekends. So, because I do agree that as construction starts, I don't want to see construction people taking up all the parking downtown. That's going to not be good. So, but I don't want to see the rate raised.
Yeah. Councilman Manino?
Are we talking the twenty-five cents per hour?
We're talking about extending, no, extending the downtown is the third one on there.
Wait, no, I see extending it, but extending it at what cost, twenty-five? Is it the twenty-five cents per hour we're discussing?
It'd be goes, be going to fifty cents.
Well, I, actually that one is-
Increasing it twenty-five cents.
Extending it currently-
We're going to start charging when currently we're not.
Currently it stops at six o'clock, so we would go, we would continue to charge from six to eight. We're not charging on the weekends, so we're charged weekends the same hours that we do during the week. That's, that's what we, we mean by extending here.
Yeah. I, I think there's a balance there. I, I, the increasing the hours, um, during a weekday, I am extremely hesitant on that. I definitely do not think we should get away from all of our paid parking, our free parking currently. I think that is a, if, if we just witnessed what went on in the city of Dunedin next to us in the last year, the community was completely up in arms and they stopped going downtown and the merchants had no choice, but they were almost ripping paid parking meters out of the ground. And I, I think we are, uh, we are a special case down here. So I'm hesitant, um, to, to increase it, uh, on those weekdays. On, on the weekends, um, the, the twenty-five cents, I'm, I'm okay with that.
So starting to charge where currently we're not charging.
In all of our free lots? Yeah?
No, no, we're not. I'm sorry. This is not to extend it into the, the lots that are currently free. Some of those are going to go away because of construction. I mean, so, some places where it's free parking right now-
At some, but not in this discussion. Thank you.
This is not to add paid parking to areas that we currently don't have it. This is just the hours that, this one item is just the hours that we're doing it. So we, right now during the week, we only do it from, what time do you start in the morning? Eight AM till six PM, Monday through Friday. This would be eight to eight, Monday through Friday, eight to eight. What we're proposing is eight to eight on the weekends as well. So it'll be seven days a week, eight to eight. That's what this particular one item is all about.
Currently, what is it on the weekends now?
I'm sorry, sir?
Currently, what is it on the weekends now?
Free.
The weekends are free right now. There, there's no charge on the weekend, which is why we're worried that those, those contractors and stuff like that will-
So, so the recommendation is to start charging on the weekends?
Correct. And a little bit later during the week.
Eight till eight, eight, eight PM?
Eight AM to eight PM, yes, sir.
Yeah.
That's what this one item is.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm hesitant on this one. I, I, parking is-
Well, it helps you. I, I think I'm, I agree with the Vice Mayor. I mean, on that one, I think, on the weekends, I think, uh, I, I love, I love the way the sound has really prospered and the activity we're getting. But we are getting ready to go through a very difficult construction period in downtown that may discourage some folks from coming. So, um, I, I like the idea at long-term, but I, I agree with the Vice Mayor. I think right now it's just a little too early to extend, extend it to the-
I'm hesitant myself as well. The timing is what I'm concerned about.
Councilman Cotton, you got an idea?
Yeah. Uh, you know, as Councilmember Manino has said in the past, I can count. So, uh, we can move on from that. I just, you know, with the sound and the way that things are developing down there, I can't tell you the last time that I came down here for a concert and there wasn't an open spot, right? So I think that this is one of those things that we need to just keep in our purview of bringing back to the table. I understand Cleveland Street, the challenges that it's facing. Um, that's it.
Yeah. Okay. So we're not ready for that one, three. Then fourth one's increase parking fines by twenty dollars across the board. I don't think there are any objections to that.
No, I'm a hundred percent favor of that. I think we incentivize people to break the rule because it's cheaper. I've seen people just say, I'm going to leave my car there because they can ticket me. It's cheaper than if I park at that guy's lot, so that, that doesn't work that way.
The next one's increase downtown parking rates by twenty-five cents to fifty cents on the street. And that's where I heard more. Vice Mayor, you're not for that, right?
That's one thing I could compromise on. It's still affordable.
Councilman Robert.
I, I really don't want to see a, a raise in the rates, uh, but we'll see what everybody else does. I, I guess if I get outvoted, I'll be fine with it.
Councilman Manino?
I'm supportive of the twenty-five cents. I think it makes-
Councilman Cotton?
I agree. I think it's still affordable. I'm supportive.
I'll, I'll support it too. So we got direction on that as well. So, and I don't think we've had anything on the last one. So anything, anything else on the parking rates that we want to discuss? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I did have for, for, uh, Mr. Kater, just, um, you know, I, I guess I'm electronically challenged too, so I couldn't kind of compare the rates. But, um, most, most of it, and I want, I want the, um, on, on all of it, particularly the Marina and Park and Rec, to understand what we're trying to achieve here. And that is, uh, as the governor has pointed out frequently here in the last couple of weeks, property tax, taxes on people, the dollar amount, not the mileage rate, but the dollar amount that people have been paying because of increased property taxes has been going up and up. But in Clearwater and many other communities in Florida where we have folks on fixed income, their incomes have not been going up. So we're just trying to be sensitive and fair to our taxpayers who are dollar amount, are paying more and more in taxes each year just to make sure what we're charging for use of our facilities is also going up to accommodate staffing expense, which is going up. We've been, we talked earlier about raising our salaries, uh, to be competitive. Cost of materials to maintain our parks and rec has been going up. And we're just trying to be fair to our taxpayers and making sure users are paying, you know, a fair amount. And it sounds like what some of these rates have not been raised in a long time, even though we've had significant inflation over that period of time. And so most of it, I think, is, is, you know, I have a few questions about. But on the event space, Coachman Park and Pier Sixty Park, which there are events out there from time to time, Anymore, and, um, and even Pier Sixty, the sand to the south side of the pier, we've used for volleyball tournaments, that kind of thing over the years. So when we, when we looked at, uh, rates for use of those event areas, was that just comparing other municipalities or did we look for, um, I, I guess I'm curious, what, 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 uh, survey did we do to make sure for those event operators were charging the same competitive rates for use?
No, I understand. And we can give you the, the various cities that we looked at and the various rate structures that they had. One of the biggest issues we have with Coachman Park, we have tried to promote it. We will continue to promote it. But the issue there has to do with bringing in large events. You have to schedule them well ahead of time. And we have a contract, as you know, with the Sound, which does present some problems with people we've tried to bring in here to reserve spots. I'm not saying that as an excuse. I'm just saying that's just one of the hurdles that we have to work with when we're trying to bring in larger events in downtown. As far as the beach rates, perhaps Mike Locke would cut off for you some more information on that. Mike?
I guess my only question is, you know, those, those four venues really, you take the ESPN event, we have it at Anymore. I mean, Pier, these are really nationally competitive venues. So just to make sure we're looking to that market for use fees rather than just equally what other municipalities are.
Sure. To the special event space, Mayor, that you were talking about, we surveyed City of Largo, City of Dunedin, City of St. Pete, Safety Harbor, Newport Ritchie, and the City of Tampa. So that's Central Park in, in Largo. You have Highlander Park, Benoi Park, Curtis Hixson Park, which we started. We're kind of right in line with that. It's, uh, with the increase to about a thousand dollars a day for that specific park venue. We also looked at some other venues here, the pavilions. I know you didn't mention that, but just to make sure we're in line with that. And then the beach weddings. I'd have to go back. I don't think we, we didn't really look too deep on the sand that you mentioned, but we can certainly look at that. I mean, there's not many other municipalities that have, you know, kind of what we have, but we could certainly look to see if there's other comparisons. Eddie Seymour that you'd mentioned, um, we are, I was just kind of going through the math in case this question came up. To rent Eddie Seymour, uh, to have a two-day tournament at Eddie Seymour, you have with administrative fees, rental fees, staff fees, and then some oversight that we have, it ranges about forty-three to, to five thousand dollars, depending on if you're using lights or not. And with that, we surveyed fourteen different, uh, locations. Uh, we went as far north as Georgia. We went all the way over to the East Coast and over west as far as Alabama, just to kind of get a good sense. Because there's so many different venues that have different types of, uh, amenities. So we tried to, you know, kind of look at everything, but nothing is truly the same. But, but to your point, I mean, it is a crown jewel. Uh, we are looking to, you know, kind of renovate the space. So we want to make sure that we're in line with the market. So.
Good. Okay. Thank you. Well, that's all I had on that one. So any other questions on these three gentlemen?
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, if I could just seek a, just a little clarification. There's two items here that I, I think we're, I'm not clear on it, so I, um, and that was number two and number six. So I, I know we had talked about, uh, I, I think we didn't like raising the, uh, monthly rate. Is that, is that correct? So there was two. There was raising the monthly rate because we were worried about the, uh, folks that work on the beach. But then there was also number two is just raising the, the overall rate by fifty cents an hour on the beach.
I don't think there was any-
I'm good with that.
I don't think there was any objection to that, Barbara.
The, which, which one?
Any one.
I think the fifty cents.
I think the doubling the permit fee was the only one we were questioning.
So, but doubling the fee, we're not, that's right? Okay. So we're good with the fifty cents, not doubling the fee? Thank you.
Maybe there's a sweet spot of fairness.
Well, I think in addition to that, on the beach rates, there was the mayor's direction to look at the residents.
Just want to be sensitive to residents and to-
Yes, sir. Okay. Sorry. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else for these gentlemen? Thank you. Thank you for your work and your reports, Mayor. Okay. That is, is it? Okay. Well, um, City Attorney verbal reports.
Right now, Mayor?
After all that, you don't have a report?
I lost my thought.
Okay. If there's nothing else to come forward, Counsel, we adjourn the work session of August five, twenty-twenty-five.